Work session. I'm gonna start after saying in January nineteen seventy-four. My wife, Ellen Louise, our two daughters at the time, and I became Blue Springs residents. So we're quickly coming up on forty years of living there. It's interesting because there are some statistics that I was kinda off on that, uh, that I will talk about in just a minute. But first, I wanna talk about a few indisputable points. We moved here in January nineteen seventy-four. In Sept- on September nineteenth nineteen seventy-four, the Board of Aldermen decided to impose a city sales tax for general revenue purposes. And I think there are some questions about how that might have gonna be spent and how it was sold. And one of the things that they sold it on is emergency medical services. The city providing that. Then in nineteen seventy-nine, on February nineteenth, there was an ordinance retaining the city's sales tax for general revenue purposes. The result of both of those elections in nineteen seventy-four, it says that approximately seventeen thousand residents were here. Fifty-five percent of the eligible voters voted, which was nineteen hundred and fifty votes. Fifty-six percent, or a thousand ninety-four, voted in favor of eight hundred fifty-six voted no, forty-four percent. Then the election in nineteen seventy-nine to retain the general sales tax, there were approximately twenty-eight thousand people living in Blue Springs. In that particular election, eighty-three percent, or two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine people voted in favor of, four hundred and eighty-seven voted against, which was slightly over sixteen percent. I think that's indisputable. So we provided during my tenure on the Blue Springs Board of Aldermen from nineteen eighty-one until January nineteen eighty-nine, we actually provided emergency medical services. I left and went to the House of Representatives. In nineteen ninety-two, it was really interesting as I went back and looked at the minutes, there was discussion on the city possibly contracting for those services. It's really interesting as I read the minutes on how that vote went. Three of the Aldermen at that time wanted to maintain it with the city. It was a three-three tie vote, and Mayor Grounds broke the tie vote, that the city would not maintain it. Then there was amendments about the frivolators and all that that was added on to the, as an amendment to the ordinance. And there was a vote taken, it was three-three again, just the opposite way. The three people that voted against it now voted for, or the people that voted for the initial one now voted against it, it was a three-three tie, and Mayor Grounds broke the tie again, that said that the city of Blue Springs would start negotiations with CJC in providing ambulance service, which is a change from what the nineteen seventy-four Board of Aldermen did. So things changed, 'cause you have different people coming in, you have different needs, and when you're talking about general revenue, the councils at that time have to make those decisions on what they're gonna do. So I wanted to point that out before we get to, uh, the main discussion. So it is my intention during this council work session is to have a discussion and hopefully reach a majority consensus on what to do with general revenue sales tax that is being appropriated to CJC as a subsidy for ambulance service, or EMS. Now, then you gotta understand, this is a three-year process. If CJC is successful, there's a three-year process before you're fully funding from their proposal that's on the ballot. It's not something that sustains, it's a process. And granted, tonight, there is no formal decisions being made. There is a process for those decisions. It's called during the budget, when you make those kinds of decisions on how you're going to spend money. So that being said, uh, I will reserve any other comments I have for later on, but we wanna have some council discussion, and Councilman Carter has asked that he be heard.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank you for convening this session, uh, because I feel like there are a lot of questions out there, the public has questions. Um, and we've had some time to do some research, exhaustive research, um, talking to people about past history, how we got where we are today, and how we got to this point in time, the council members will note this, that we got to a point where we felt like the current model was not sustainable long-term. We're not in the ambulance business anymore, we haven't been since nineteen ninety-two, as you point out. We've had this peculiar situation where we hold the license and we pay a subsidy to CJC. The votes that you talked about and the taxes that you talked about in nineteen seventy-four and seventy-nine, I think it's important to point out, especially when I drive into this building and I see signage up that says no double taxation. These taxes were never tied to ambulance service, never tied to ambulance service. They were general taxes that could be used by any council at any time for any particular thing that they deemed necessary. It was not a dedicated ambulance tax. It was the shiny object that was used to get the tax passed in nineteen seventy-four and nineteen seventy-nine, but it was never tied to ambulance service. Ambulance service transferred to CJC in nineteen ninety-two, and again, we held the license. Every year since, there's been a subsidy paid, and each year, it was dependent on several factors, capital cost being one. We'd get a bill from CJC, and we had to scramble, was it gonna be too high, was it gonna be too low? General revenue can be spent on anything the council deems important in any fiscal year. And next month, we're gonna start the budget process, and we'll go through that process. It'll be a very public exercise, it is every year. People are invited to come and give their input. Uh, but again, the council can spend the money on what it deems important in any fiscal year. While there's no legal obligation, I think Councilman Fowler and I agree on that, he will bring up that we have a moral obligation. Well, do we have a moral obligation to the one thousand ninety-four people who voted yes in nineteen seventy-four? Or do we have a moral obligation to the nearly fifty-five thousand who live in Blue Springs today to spend their tax revenues on things important today and moving forward? If the CJC levy doesn't pass, and that vote's coming up next month, that license will come back to the city. And the real possibility will exist that we'll farm the license out to a company not nearly as good in an effort to do away with the annual subsidy payment. That'll be one option. This city is not swimming in money. We have a relatively low tax rate. We're a growing city with expanding needs. We'll come to the citizens later this year asking for a dedicated parks tax this fall to build a state-of-the-art community center and address long-needed issues of deferred maintenance and new park development. I asked this question when we were talking about the parks tax, what kind of city do we wanna be? Would the citizens rather have a very small tax rollback or the streets repaved? Because one of the issues that we haven't talked about yet is that there will be no street paving program, because we've dedicated that money in the next fiscal year to the Woodschapel Road project. So I asked the question, you're talking about a very small tax rollback in terms of real dollars, would you rather have that, or would you rather have your streets repaved? I do get how this looks like double taxation, but the bottom line is, the way we're doing it isn't sustainable long-term, and the result of not passing the CJC levy and allowing us to reallocate any savings from the subsidy will be a net long-term negative on the city's ability to deliver services. So that's where I am on it. I look back historically, and you're looking at a very small number of people who voted in nineteen seventy-four. The question I have is how many of that thousand people who voted yes in nineteen seventy-four still live here?
Besides me.
Besides you?
Yeah.
And Ellen Louise.
Yeah.
Well, one way or another, I'm thinking a lot of those thousand people aren't here anymore. We have fifty-five thousand people, almost fifty-five thousand people in this city moving forward, and the needs change every year. And I don't wanna tie this council like a ball and chain to something as archaic as this. It's not double taxation, it is what it is. That's my statement.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah. Well, the Blue Springs residents are getting a tax increase for a service they already have if the levy passes. No doubt, in our budget, if you look at the actual records of City Hall, thirty million dollars have been spent out of our general fund since nineteen ninety-two to provide ambulance service, okay? You heard a claim that we're not in the ambulance service business since ninety-two? We'll ex- I say completely the opposite. We wrote the specifications and the requirements for the ambulance service contract, we administer that contract, we oversee it, we got a city administrator that negotiates all the details of that contract, and we set the requirements for any future proposal, okay? I think the discontent to say CJC wouldn't be the contractor going forward is disrespectful to CJC, and, and, you know, 'cause we don't know what's gonna be the requirements in that ambulance service document. It could be, they could be the only ones that could provide the service. We certainly had higher subsidies to the ambulance service than what we have today. When you say it's not sustainable, what do you say about the prior subsidies that we've had that were four or five hundred thousand dollars higher than today's? Blue Springs residents are gonna get a tax increase for a service they're already paying taxes for. I say that that's duplicate taxation, the CJC's tax and the city of Blue Springs tax. You say it's a small number of people, I didn't realize that democracy came with an expiration date, okay? And I think that's a disservice to those that voted for it. I think it's a disservice for all the people that, uh, you know, have fought for democracy I guess, I don't see this as responsible leader looking out for the taxpayers if we're knowingly letting them go to the polls, voting themselves a tax increase for a service they've already got. I just don't think that's appropriate. The elected leaders of Blue Springs have cut the largest service ever cut in the history of the city, and they're keeping the taxes. Thirty million dollars over twenty years is a significant number. For the last five years of the contract, when it's in Blue Springs' hand, it's averaged two-point-two million dollars a year. That's not the subsidy, that's the actual cost. And the subsidy is actually the cost minus the revenues that we get for the service. So, um, to say that it's not, it's not like cutting an insignificant service, this is a, this is a one that's committed. And you're right, I've never said that this is illegal, this is a moral, ethical, and integrity-type issue that I say, um, you acknowledge that ambulance was the center point, the, uh, of the issue back then, it's how they publicized it, it's what they committed to. I say fifty-four percent of that original budget was dedicated to ambulance service. That's what they put in the paper, that's what's in the Board of Aldermen notes from the day. I guess we, I think there should be an explanation of why citizens should pay twice for the same You know, if you want support a reduction in taxes, explain why. You know, there's no legal reason, but I think there's an ethical reason for it, and it ought to be explained to the citizens why you intend to keep it. We can certainly talk about roads, I guess this meeting is gonna come down to, you know, do you wanna discuss and quantify a number that we would use for tax reductions, or if we're not gonna do any tax reductions, what do you wanna do with the money? So hopefully, we'll get that, to that point in this meeting in a few moments. I guess to me, it, regardless of the seventy-four issue, which I think is important, which I think we should honor some of the, some of the history from the ballot box, our citizens will be having to pay for a tax, they, or pay for a service they've already paying taxes I think the city can ignore that, and I think ultimately, even if, even if it passes, the citizens are gonna ultimately realize that thirty million dollars of their money has been going, coming out of the general fund, going into ambulance service, it's a significant service. To sit on the sidelines and not act like it's not, well, I think someday, the city will pay the consequence for not doing something. I'll let some of my other colleagues talk, I'm certainly not down on this issue, but let's open up for...
Councilman Leveson?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take a crap out of here. I realize everybody's kind of approaching this from a different angle, I think that was clear in a lot of the communication we've had. I've talked to all of you at least once, with the exception of Councilman Carter, I guess we talked by voicemails.
Trade voicemails, right.
As a talk to, but, you know, my approach to this has been, from the beginning, even and back to October, as sort of a budget discussion, and then we're talking revenue and paying for services and taxes and all that. And so, uh, when I look at this, in October, we made the decision to create an efficiency in the budget of whatever the subsidy is, and seven hundred thousand is kind of the number we're throwing around now. So that was seven hundred thousand dollars, my estimation, we made the decision to save of the taxpayers' dollars in the budget to use for whatever it is we're talking about, roads or sidewalks or that deferred maintenance that we had such a big deal about last council meeting. And I don't know how many times I've gone to Mr. Johnson's office and said, "Hey Eric, let's take sidewalks, I really think we need to put more money in sidewalks, you know, these are the benefits of the city, these are the citizens who have contacted me and said how important it is." And usually, the conversation goes something like this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but usually goes something like, "Chris, I think you're right, and you know, I agree with you entirely, but where are you gonna get the money? What service are you going to cut in order to pay for sidewalks or whatever we're discussing?" So in all estimation, this is a budget discussion, we're talking about money and what to do. We have fiduciary responsibilities, I already use a business term here, we have fiduciary responsibility to do the best with the money we've been given and do that best for the citizens. So, CJC has entered the conversation here because of the service that we're talking about. Now, they have been making presentations to the citizens, to their constituents, about the level of service they've been providing, and what the cost of that is, and how much money it's going to cost them to do it. So, to say that they're going to be receiving a service that they're already getting isn't really accurate, because what they're saying is to provide that service and to continue to provide that service, it's going to cost more money than they're currently paying. And I would agree with Councilman Carter, what's happening now, the rising costs are not a sustainable model for us who have no control over how they do business, not the way we'd want any, 'cause we know how to run an ambulance, but have no direct control with their operations, they can just, because of the reflection of their costs, costs continue to rise, and we have no control over it, and that's not a sustainable model. I think is, if I interpret what you're saying correctly. So, what they've been doing is communicating with their constituents that if you want to continue to receive ambulance service at the level of which we've provided for the last twenty years, you're doing a great job, this is what it's going to cost you, and we need this tax increase to do it. Now, the citizens have the option here in August to voice and say, "We do not want to continue to receive that service, we're not willing to pay for it," at which point, the relicience will resort back, and we'll have to have the hard conversations that we're always willing to have as a city council. So, it's not really a link, in my estimation, there really isn't a connection here between what Central Jackson County Fire Protection District is doing and the discussion they're having with their constituents, and the discussion that we're intending to have here, I think, in our city budget. This is a budget discussion with the money that's left over because of the agreement, and that's where the connection is. But for the most part, we are having a discussion here, that's a budget discussion, what are we gonna do with the money we've been providing? We're performing our fiduciary responsibility. So where I think Councilman Fowler and I tend to have some agreement is I'm always willing to have a discussion as if cutting taxes is the appropriate thing to do with this money. And there may be some room for that, that's something that I don't think we have the information to do here tonight. You know, I don't think I can say we need to put X number of dollars in roads and X numbers in sidewalks, because we don't know the type of budget that administration is going to give us in four days. So, that may be better served if we can come to that agreement, say, "Hey, at least consider this as an option, there is room for the conversation of cutting taxes." But I don't think that it's necessarily linked to this issue is necessarily connected. The only reason that's connected with the fire department is because of the agreement, and the only reason we're having a conversation at fifteen cents is because that's the number that they've established. It's an arbitrary number as far as we're concerned, because we have no connection with that. That's their costs and their constituents and what they are communicating then. So, if you're asking if I'm willing to have a conversation to roll back taxes, I'm always willing to have that conversation. I think it needs to be rational conversation in the budget discussion, I think it needs to be a reasonable number, and I'm not really prepared to propose a number tonight. But I think that's kind of, when we're looking at this, we can't decide of the fact that we're talking about our responsibility of what we're gonna do with the money for the citizens, and how that's best done for them. If that is a tax reduction, then I think that's something we need to consider. But it's still that pot of money and what we're gonna give them. So, that would be kind of my take on it. You know, I think we need to kind of separate issues here to some extent, let CJC communicate with their constituents, and then let our constituents communicate with us how we should spend budget money. So, that's how I would say it.
Anybody else?
Well, I just have a couple things I'd like to throw in. I appreciate what Councilman Leveson said, because I agree with him wholeheartedly, it's a budget issue. I don't see this as double taxation. You promote things that are needed at the time. When we present a budget and we go looking at the tax dollars, it's what our needs are right then. We've changed our money for what we've put into streets, we've changed our money for all the different items that have come up over the years. We're talking about a forty-year process here. What I do find interesting is when you go back and you look at all the documentation, it is very clear, it says general fund in everything throughout the entire forty years. And in twenty-twelve, it was very clear that the citizens of CJC District should share equitably in the financial support of the ambulance service. It's in the documentation. I also find it interesting that, and since I'm in District Three, I would like to point out that a good many of the people in District Three voted for a thirty-cent EMS tax. They're paying the taxes that we're discussing to the city of Blue Springs. They also voted for a thirty-cent EMS tax there, for a dedicated tax. That, to me, speaks very loud and clear. They don't consider it double taxation.
Question on that statement. You said that thirty cents of that cost of the EMS tax for the residents in Prairie Township goes to the city of Blue Springs.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
I said thirty, well, I'm sorry. Thirty cents is for their dedicated EMS tax to Prairie.
That goes to Prairie Township.
To Prairie.
And, correct.
But they're still paying the Blue Springs.
Oh, and, and...
Because they're citizens.
And we absolutely agree that thirty cents is going to Prairie Township. The people that live in Prairie Township, that's been an argument of mine for some time, is they're paying, they're paying twice for ambulance service, they're paying for Prairie Township, and their tax dollars goes towards paying...
They apparently don't think so.
Let me finish my sentence.
They voted for it.
Let me finish my sentence, please.
Sorry.
The fact that, no, let me finish my sentence, Your Honor.
I know, I'm saying, what I'm saying.
The fact is, their tax dollars, just like your tax dollars, go to paying for the CJC contract. And that's my point, is that they are getting double taxed, and I'd like to remedy that situation by lowering their taxes for when, for the CJC portion of it.
See, and I don't, I don't see it that way. They were educated on their EMS tax of thirty cents, they voted for it, for Prairie, for the Prairie. Because they understand that those other funds are general tax, not dedicated EMS tax.
And what do you think they'd say about their city of Blue Springs dollars going towards the CJC contract?
Probably the same thing they would say about any funds going to unincorporated Green Valley, Lake Tapawingo, those places that are not picking up that subsidy. So, you know, I mean, it's a two, it's a double-edged sword, but I do believe we are still talking about general tax.
Well, you know, and one of the things I think is getting lost in the translation here, we're talking about sales tax. Sales tax is not just imposed on local people, it's anybody that's shopping in this one. So we got people that's traveling at seventy, will stop, buy something, they're having paid for that, 'cause it's a sales tax. Councilman...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, that's one of the confusing points, as I talk to constituents, Councilman Fowler keeps telling people in the public that they have an ambulance tax, but there is no ambulance tax in Blue Springs, and there never has been. And I think Councilman Carter did an excellent job of laying that out. So, when, when you say that there's a dedicated tax for the Prairie Township people that the people voted for, I agree absolutely with what you said. The people down there, when they voted for it, they knew that they were paying Blue Springs' taxes at the time, they voted for a dedicated EMS tax. What's happening here now is the people in the Central Jackson County Fire Protection District are being asked to vote for a dedicated tax for that same type of EMS service. So you have citizens on the south part of our city that have already voted for a dedicated tax, you have CJC asking their residents to vote for a dedicated tax, and in the middle of this, in nineteen ninety-two, the city council made a decision to go to a fee-for-service model, which does not involve sales tax, property tax, or anything, knowing because of caps on the amount that you can charge for the service, that we would have to subsidize this to some degree out of our general tax. But every year, since we've had general taxes in Blue Springs, the city council sits down and it determines where our residents' priorities are, and we allocate that general tax to the services that we believe our citizens find most important. We're also called to be good stewards of the tax money that we collect. And so, as we have watched this particular piece, this subsidy piece that's coming out of our general fund, as it ramps up, it forces us to take that same money from other services that we've deemed to be important. And so, in the process of being conservative and in being fiscally responsible, we look at how this funding is done, and made a decision in October, I believe, to, to change this to a model that was sustainable. And so, the confusion is coming from this myth that there's an ambulance tax in Blue Springs. I would also say that if you go back to the seventy-four literature, there's like six or eight different items that were part of that. If you go back to our budgets in recent years, you'll find those six or eight items aren't the only things we tax. We've been changing the things that we fund all these years, every year. And I haven't heard these debates on a year-by-year basis, as one thing gets shoved aside, should we roll back the tax for that? As another thing gets added, should we go in and, and ask the voters for another tax? And the reason we don't do that is because we're dealing with a general tax. And so, the concept, the statement that we're double taxing here, doesn't make any sense, because every year, we change the formula, and it would only be a double tax if the money was going to ambulance service from both organizations. It's not a double tax if we allocate the money to another critical service, because the citizens are now getting that service in place of the other service. So there's no way that anybody can legitimately call this a double tax. And that's what I think we need to be thinking about as we look at that. That's all I got here.
Well, I go back to Councilman Fowler, let me see, Councilman Edmond has something.
I do believe he quoted me, though, and I'd like an opportunity to rebut that quote.
You wanna go ahead and rebut, then, then...
Watch Rush here now.
I would, I would challenge Councilman Quell to ever show where I've said we have an ambulance tax in writing, okay? Because what I've said is our citizens' tax dollars have gone towards ambulance service and paying that, all right?
And you've said we should roll back an ambulance tax. Did I not hear that earlier as we were talking?
I said we should roll, I think my, my motion was pretty clear, I wanted to roll back the property tax levy.
So you're talking about your motion now?
Well, I think that that's been communicated. But, but the, um, the issue in nineteen ninety-two, let's go back to nineteen seventy-four, 'cause it's the same thing. In nineteen seventy-four, per the Examiner editorial, um, "The service to be provided at no fee to residents, however, the city will attempt to collect insurance if the passengers have any." And that's a responsible thing to do, they said it in nineteen seventy-four, and it wasn't getting done in nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-two consistently, and the city council asked that we structure that to go to third-party billing to collect that insurance. And revenues did increase, and the subsidy did decrease after that time. So, I don't think there was a significant change, other than the contract with CJC back in nineteen ninety-two. When you say, you say that it's not duplicate taxation, well, you're saying, "Okay, with future monies, we're not gonna dedicate it to ambulance service, therefore, it's not duplicate taxation." But our budget clearly shows, and you have voted to dedicate money to the service of ambulance, every year you voted for that budget, because we have dedicated money towards ambulance. And now, now that you're saying it's time to terminate the service, you're saying, "Oh, well, now that we've terminated it, it's not duplicate taxation." I'm saying that all that money that has been going towards it should go back to the citizens.
What service are we terminating? I believe there's still going to be ambulance service after this decision.
Not by the city of Blue Springs.
Are you saying, then, that we should go back and take a look at the seventy-four document and terminate every service that this city provides that's not in that document?
Nope.
So you're just picking and choosing?
I'm talking about ambulance service.
You're just picking and choosing?
Exactly right. The biggest service the city of Blue Springs has ever cut, and I'm talking about ambulance service.
Okay. Well, that shows a good inconsistency.
You're up.
Do I get my opening arguments here? You know, I look at this, and I apologize upfront, that I come from a very business background for years and years and years. So, to me, we're talking about a fee for services, whether it's sales tax or property tax, it's for, it's what the residents of our community paid for services that they provide by the city. And if the city didn't provide it, they'd have to, for example, the city provided trash service, that would be a part of that taxes or part of their deal. Since the city doesn't provide tax services, homeowners have to pay for that themselves. So essentially, we're looking for revenue that comes in that is budgeted out to provide services to the citizens of Blue Springs, as best as we as a city council and as cities- staff can provide, given the amount of money, you know, pot of money they have. You know, and that pot of money gets divided up, you know, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Police Department, it, it gets situated. And depending upon the needs at the time, and the size of the city, the age of the city, is how that kind of gets allocated out. Anytime you come forward with, with a way to try to, to increase your revenue by increasing your taxes, and usually provide a list of what you want to provide for. So, really, in some aspects, we're at a neat crossroads here in that, as Ron said, we're eliminating a service that the city provided, ambulance service, and it's being transferred over to another governmental entity. And that creates a blind item, budget item, that of X amount of money, that we have budgeted for that service, is to supplement that service. Now, if that gets transferred over to another entity, that money now is available as a blind item, budget item. Now, it's up to us to decide whether we want to take advantage of that, and as Ron suggested, do a rollback to, to give that back to, to the residents, as a service to them. I mean, they put that money in, so now we have a chance, okay, we give that back. Or should we look at it, is that money available to further enhance services that we already have, add new services? And, and I have no idea, you know, staff's been working on that, they may have some sort of service that they want to provide that, that might be a benefit to the residents that we don't even know about yet. That type of thing, we should make that decision, and I agree with Chris on that, that we're talking budgetary decisions, and that needs to be a budgetary conversation that we, we have. I feel that this meeting tonight is essential, because I don't think, I think staff's up in the air, as far as where, they take their direction from us, and if they're confused about direction, we need to have a meeting and kind of give them some guidelines. Because if we come back with a budget, and all of a sudden, now we're way out off on left field on a budget, staff's got something and spent a lot of time and effort, months of time and effort in coming up with that budget, and now all of a sudden, we dump on Christine and say, hey, we want to have this all switched around, what can you do in a very short limited time? So, I think it's essential we have this meeting tonight to try to at least get some ideas for staff to have a roadmap to work off of from now on the budget. So, I think we can all come to agreement on that part of it. How do we do those type of guidelines is what we're going to work out tonight, so. But I still, I agree with Chris, that we are talking about a budget, we have an opportunity, possibly, for rollback. I agree that, that it's a general tax fund that we're talking about. It confuses me when we do ten general tax fund, and we're talking about a levy. To me, they're two separate entities, two separate revenue columns, how can you take one from the other? And then, I'm also confused a little bit in that Central Jackson County is, is, has provides a service, that has been providing that service. And in some aspects, Chris, I think you're wrong, in that we do have some oversight in how they dispense that service, because Eric handles that contract negotiations. Now, maybe we don't do the day-to-day type thing, we don't have the immediate hands-on type deal, we leave that up to them, you know, here's your contract, you run it the best you can, if you've got some issues with the contract, we try to work it out and pass it on and let them deal with it. I mean, that's how it should be. But we do still have some control over that. But I think we need to, to look at the fact that, that this is a budget item. It is budgetary that we're looking at, and what we need to do with that as far as options and stuff. So, I guess that's my opening statement.
A week from tomorrow, the voters will decide in the CJC service area. That will include Green Valley, Lake Tapawingo, and unincorporated Jackson County, who's had a free ride for a lot of years, and they need to be paying their fair share when it comes to supporting the fine services CJC provides. It is an item that we need to talk about in the budget, but we need to also have some kind of direction. I know CJC is anxious to know, because they're getting some questions. It's their issue, but they're getting questions, are we being double taxed, da-da-da-da-da-da? And certainly, we'd like to have some clarification on where we think we want to go with this. Are we talking about rolling back something? And so far, I'm not hearing a whole lot of support for rolling anything back, because one of the things I want to remind all of you, on July first, this month, the City Council unanimously approved a capital improvement budget, or, what do we call it?
Plan CIP.
Plan, the CIP, the CIP plan. And in that document, and I have a copy of it right here, is one hundred forty-six point five million dollars worth of unfunded projects. A hundred and forty-six point five million dollars. The other point I want to make is if CJC is successful next Tuesday, and I hope that they are, we will still subsidize in this upcoming budget of around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you don't have a big windfall that you got, that where you're going to go out and fix a lot of sidewalks, or whatever you want to do with it. It's a three-year process. That will be reduced over a period of three years. We don't know what the City Council is going to look like in three years from now, or how they're going to decide they want to spend that money. But it's something that they will discuss during the budget period. Let's say that we have an issue on the ballot in November. A dedicated, just like we had a dedicated public safety tax, that's what it has to be spent on. We have a dedicated parts question on the ballot in November. The money can only go to parts, can't go anyplace else. If we take this CIP, remove all the dollars associated with the parts, saying it's going to be successful, we can take those dedicated dollars, put it in parts, if we subtract that out of that one hundred forty-six point five million dollars, we still have eighty million dollars worth of unfunded projects. And I think at its, at its peak, if it was a million dollars a year, that we would realize if we ended up having a, not to be able to subsidize CJC, it would take eighty years. I'm not going to be around another eighty years, folks. I like to think I'm going to be around for a while, but not eighty more years, that puts me a hundred and forty something. But anyway...
Good genes.
Yeah, I got some good genes, but I won't make my genes with that good. But I want to, it's something that I think we all need to take into consideration. But again, we can't make a decision here tonight. The only thing we can do is maybe be able to give some direction on what your thought process is, and where you think we need to be doing. And another one question really is, are you leaning toward trying to do some kind of rollback at the appropriate time? Are you interested in taking those dollars and putting it into work? There are some significant needs. Blue Springs is the tenth largest city in the state of Missouri. We are gaining a reputation of being a destination, a quality place, not just because of the city, because of the school district, because of CJC, because of all the partners in this community, to be a top-notch city, a place that you want to live. Again, I've been lived here almost forty years. That comes with a cost. There's no such thing as a free life. And so far, people have been willing to spend their money to do it. They've supported buying issues for schools, we have a top-notch school district, they've been supportive lately of things we need to do in Blue Springs. And I think they will continue, as long as we show that we're responsible, and we're going to do what we say we're going to do, they will do that. But we cannot, as this council, bind future councils, especially as it relates to general revenue. If it's dedicated, you betcha, you bet a total line. But if it's not dedicated, if it's general, it's at the discretion of the City Council to make those decisions during a budget process. Yes?
And Mayor Ross, that is vetted during public hearings that'll take place as we work toward the budget. This will be my fourth year, in the preceding three, not one person came to a public hearing to talk about the budget. Not one citizen came forward to say anything about the budget. So, we were left on our own to do that. One other point I would make is that in the outlying years of the CIP, because of increased cost, we're going to go from two and a half million dollars on the street overlay program, I believe, to three and a half million, is that right?
That's what we had projected, but it's not included in the statement.
Right. Okay. But that's what we projected moving forward because of increased cost. That's another million dollars. That's where that money could go. If we roll back now, we're going to have to raise taxes later in order to pave streets.
I don't know if you all remember, God bless his soul, he's on with us, Dr. Oliver DeGrae. He came and took a very complicated issue, as we talked about, the overlay program, and made it so simple that I could understand it, that even on a nineteen-year replacement cycle, would, would be what the money, we're talking about, the two point five, eventually going up to three. Most people don't want their street rehab and repairs on a nineteen. We'd like to have it down to no more than a ten-year. I don't know what the life, Chris, what is the life of a residential street? A good life of a residential street?
It depends on what your definition of life is.
Good, good point. The worst, usable, and you don't have, you're not out there passionate all the time. I mean, before you start getting into worse, really some wear and tear on it, you can go through to where I'm not having to get an alignment once a week.
Generally, about twenty years.
About twenty years.
Twenty years. That's on a residential.
On a residential, but you're still climbing in during those twenty years, doing some basic maintenance to it, aren't you?
That's correct, we do crack sealing and a few, a little bit of patching, some transverse cracks prepared, so. But the arterial and collector streets have a higher frequency, those get done in seven to ten years, and ten to fifteen years, we have, because of the traffic and the loading on those.
Well, I mean, and I only bring it up because that's just one, one area that we have to look at. Also, within your area, you have, and I know this last hand, we have a great reputation for snow removal in this city. Great reputation. But I know due to the heaviness of the snow this year, we ran into some hydraulic problems. So, we probably have some vehicles that needs to be replaced, has been deferred. So, I mean, all those things add into things that we need to keep this quality safe. So, my only point is, is folks, we got a lot of needs, we got more needs than we got money.
Your Honor, I, I, there is certainly an awful lot of need out there, I have no, no doubt about that. You know, my issue is, is this is the largest voter approved service ever discontinued in the City of Blue Springs, and if we don't do something, the citizens are going to get a tax increase for a service they've been paying for since the 1970s. I'm, I'm pleading with my elected representatives to, to do that, to give some money back. May not happen, but that's, that's where I'm at on it. And so, I guess we're probably about ready to make that decision on what you guys want to do. You know, what...
Don't try to distract them.
Are, are we going to, I would certainly want to do an informal poll to find out if people want to oppose that, and then try and quantify what that would be, or if you say, if, you know, if the answer no is that, to decide, you know, give some kind of, you know, I think the voters deserve some kind of answer about where that money's going to go.
Yeah. You brought up a good point, and actually, all of us kind of brought up a good point, is, is we talk about needs, the city has needs, I mean, we have roads, you guys have all brought up about the Woods Chapel, and how we've had to defer. It's still a road, the money's still going for a road. Instead of being spread all over town, we're taking one of our major thoroughfares and trying to improve it that's been long been needed, that's my soapbox there, sorry. But as far as needs, I think we, we as, as elected officials have a responsibility, Chris used a really big word on that one, I won't repeat it, but she did really good on it, as far as, as needs. And, and when we talked about the action on the park, dedicated park money coming up, I expressed a concern of, of taxes, as, as things go on, our tax rates keep climbing and climbing. And a lot of that is because, again, it's a product for service, there's a need associated with that, and the city has a need, but those families, and my concern there was that people who are, are on limited budgets, and maybe the, the increasing in taxes all over, not districtly, city taxes, but state taxes, county taxes, all that, puts a burden on their needs. So, I think, Ron, you're absolutely right, in some aspects, we need to consider that need. You know, maybe at this joint, this venture right now, maybe the need for our citizens is maybe give them a little bit of relief in taxes, maybe. The other side of that is, you know, you go backwards now, it's hard to go back forward. It's very hard to go back forward, again. The, the amount of rebate that you could give them, is that enough that it offsets the fact of, of maybe the fact that you can use that money to, to further enhance the needs that the city has now that benefit the city and the taxpayer for long-term? You know, we talked about twenty years on a road, if, if an additional seven hundred thousand dollars did another two miles of road, that lasts for twenty years. I mean, those are type of things we need to look at with this money. So, those needs, we need to balance, of whether the savings to the, to the residents, to those taxpayers, and, again, we're talking to sales tax, we're actually talking people outside the area. Those needs that, that we do and construct and finish here in town benefits those residents here in town. So, sometimes they get a benefit outside, and we discussed how, you brought it up, I think, about Susan, that we've been putting a bill, or actually, the mayor did, putting a bill for Tapawingo and unincorporated Jackson County and, you know, Green Valley. Well, we've also benefited by those people from Green Valley outside the area that, that shop here in Blue Springs. And we've all seen that in our reports, we've got how sales tax is up in those areas. So, it's a two-way street on some of that stuff, if, you know, you, however you want to slice and dice it. But I really think we do need to look at needs and concentrate on needs.
Anyone else have any comments? So, I guess Councilman Fowler wants to know who, who has an appetite for doing some type of rollback.
Here's my question, how much of a rollback are you talking about? Are you talking about seven hundred thousand dollars?
I think we can try and quantify it with those people that are open.
Year one, we're still paying seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars subsidy.
As this current year, we will have paid, we will have paid that by September 30th of this year.
Okay, then it goes down to five hundred thousand.
So, you captured two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And any, any motion I propose would be phased in with, you know, the, the lowering would be phased in with the increase in CJC.
Okay. Because I did a little simple math here, I'm not the math whiz, as everybody on this council knows. But I took seven hundred thousand dollars, divided it by fifty-two thousand, which is about the current population of Blue Springs. That's thirteen dollars and forty-six cents per person.
Okay.
Is that enough? So, everybody gets a check for thirteen forty-six, and it...
It wouldn't be a check, it would be a reduction in their taxes, which would happen every year going forward.
And you're talking about property tax...
Yes.
When the initial tax was a sales tax.
Correct.
So, you're doing apples and oranges here. The initial sales tax was paid by people shopping in Blue Springs, not necessarily living in Blue Springs.
Correct. And, and, but both, we acknowledge that both...
You don't see an inconsistency there?
We both acknowledge that the, that the one-cent sales tax and property tax both go into this thing called a general fund.
Which general fund means we can use it for anything we perceive necessary in outlying years.
Absolutely, but when you start mixing those two streams...
Right.
And, and that, that service is paid out of that stream, I think it's a fair way of, of reducing taxes, okay? And it gets it back to our citizens.
I'll go first. You know, we're, we're ahead of the budget cycle, and we're going to get into the budget cycle, and we'll have those discussions moving forward. But I don't want to roll back tax rates, only to have to come back two and three years down the road and say, okay, pavement costs more now, and we want to do three million dollars or three and a half million dollars on the repaving program, but we can't do it because we gave you the money back. And now, we're going to ask you for a tax increase.
Is, doesn't that honor the Hancock Amendment? Go in and ask him, the voters, if you can have a tax increase?
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
I'll take your word for that.
That, the Hancock Amendment says that if you want more money, then you need to go ask the voters for approval.
Yeah. But if we don't roll back the taxes, we don't have to go ask them.
That's right, you don't have to ask the voters.
Because they've already given us the money.
Because they've already given us the money, right.
For, for something they voted on, that you're no longer providing that service.
No, for general use.
General or use revenue.
For general revenue, for the needs of our cities.
Look it up, there is no evidence that this tax, and you even admitted that tonight, there is no evidence this tax was ever tied to ambulance service.
Well, I would, I would say that morally and ethically it is, because they didn't come up with these taxing slogans, the slogans about ambulance service, they didn't, the examiner recommended it be approved for the ambulance service alone, so they sold it to the voters that way. You want me to read the examiner article? I see shaking your head. I'd like to do this for the public. Examiner editorial.
Ron, go down to the one, two, three, four, five.
How many of you really listen to the examiner?
But they say, but Your Honor, they also saying here that it's also to be used to hire three policemen.
Sure, it's used for other things.
So, so it's not dedicated ambulance?
Can I read it?
Sure. I guess that's all right, Your Honor.
The, the city is proposing to introduce type-one ambulance service, which would be unique in this area. That type of ambulance service would surely save lives. It would surely mean a more rapid recovery for patients. To us, that alone is worth a yes vote on the one percent sales tax proposal on the October 22nd. To us, that alone is worth a yes vote on the 1% sales tax proposal on the October 22nd special ballot. That tax will provide 166,000 revenue for the first, for the first year, about 90,000, which would be used for the fantastic ambulance service. So I contend that it's a moral issue, there's no legal issue, I, I don't deny that. So I'm making a moral and ethical thing that you've told the voters one thing, and now when you stop providing that service, you do another.
Before I go to Councilman Corvail, if I recall, having been a resident here in 1974, keep throwing that up. The ambulance service was free for Blue Springs residents.
With the exception of, as it said, the billing of insurance. Correct.
But after 1992?
I don't, I recall that there is a line item in the 92 agreement that says we'll do things for people that don't have insurance.
But it's engine care, and I think that's kind of required in hospitals and earth.
And I think you, even your family has said, called up City Hall and said, hey, this is supposed to be free ambulance service, I don't want to pay this bill.
I called them, why was I being, why was I being charged for it?
Right.
Because, you know, being a resident in 1974, it's supposed to be free.
Sure, and, and by, by, by the fact that our city tax dollars have paid 30 million since 1992, it ain't free.
No, it's not free.
And I, and, and if it'll, if, if you would support a $700,000, $700,000 annual reduction in taxes, I'll certainly support that, okay?
I'm sure you would.
But I don't see you doing that, so.
Again, I think.
I'm looking for a compromise here.
We have expenses coming down the road, you know, that the mayor just laid out for us. We have expenses that are coming, which is why when we get back to the beginning of this whole process, why we wanted to give the license to CJC in the first place. We wanted to fully get out of the ambulance business.
And keep the taxes.
We have not been in the ambulance business since 1992. I mean, you can argue that we've had the contract and we negotiate, we don't have an ambulance that says Blue Springs, the city of Blue Springs on.
But we buy.
We're not in the ambulance business. No, we buy them, and it's like, hello, guess what, we bought an ambulance and you got the bill. Okay, that is not a sustainable way to manage a budget moving forward.
Councilman Corvail.
Your honor, it occurred to me, as Councilman Fowler read the statement in the paper about providing a unique, high-quality ambulance service, he may not realize this, but what he is, what he has proposed along the way over this last week or so, puts our city at risk at not having that anymore. What we're, what we're doing as a council in this process, and I don't know if those, those here in the audience realize this, but one of the points in the presentation from CJC was that if you have a heart attack in a city in the United States, and you call 911 and you're transported to the hospital, the national average likelihood that you will walk out of that hospital alive is 6%. In Blue Springs today, it's 57%. And what we're doing with this change that was made, recommended in October and that CJC is working on, is trying to keep that level of service in our city. Because the unsustainable model that Councilman Fowler would have us maintain would cause us potentially to go out for bid and hire a service that is closer to the national average in order to meet the financial needs, as opposed to that. So if we can propose a way to keep this service in our city and save 57% of the people that have a heart attack, just to pull that one statistic out, and I would argue that Councilman Fowler pulls individual things out of stuff and focuses on those, so that's what I'm going to do here, that what he's proposing is risking losing that level of service for our residents. So what we're doing here is we're making a responsible decision to, to keep that quality of service in our city as we promised in 1974, and by the mechanism that we're talking about. And I think that that also is something to be considered. As to the, you know, as to the, your question about what we will or will not support, I agree with what Councilman Levis said earlier, and that is that when we're in the middle of our budget discussions with public hearings and all those things, we should talk about all these things. But it doesn't mean that we're going to make any particular decision, and we can't actually, I don't think any of us commit to one thing specifically tonight until we have the entire budget in front of us so that we know what, what else is going to be affected. And we don't have that today. So it's, to me, it's a case of, we've made a decision to maintain a quality service, and we're being asked to potentially eliminate the level of quality that we've attained in this city, which makes us unique.
Chris? Well, I hope to bring it back to a little of something we can agree on. I, I think we all agree, within a budget cycle, the only way to continue to pay or pay for something new is either to raise taxes and get new revenue, or to cut a service and free up revenue. So I mean, that, that's kind of what we're coming in here, is, is that's what we have to approach this. Now, I think what Councilman Corvail just said, I, I'm not, I am willing to consider a rollback of, of reduction in taxes. And so I mean, if you're wanting to put me down as, in a column, I'm willing to consider that. But I'm, I would be more comfortable having real numbers, you know, how that affects, impacts the current budget, what detriment that could possibly have to, you know, our employees, which we have a responsibility to provide for as well. So, you know, I would like to look at real numbers before I start having those discussions, but that's kind of how I would approach it moving forward.
Yes. Yes, your honor. I guess since this is going to be uncommitted tax dollars, you know, if we don't commit them, you know, then they, we don't have to discuss that during budget time, okay? If we're wanting to use, redirect those uncommitted monies into another service, you know, that's the time we need to figure out the budget issue. So, but it, but we know that we're discontinuing the service so that subsidy is not going to be there anymore. To me, that's uncommitted tax dollars, and we can make that decision on uncommitted tax dollars. I want to address the unsustainable model, though, that I hear being used. Our city, our subsidy of EMS has certainly been higher in the past than it is right now. It's averaged 1.1 million for four years, back years ago, now it's, now it's averaging around $700,000. I don't see, I mean, I'm committed to providing good ambulance service, just like I was in 1992. And to project that it's just unsustainable model when we don't know what a future economy looks like, I think that's a lot of speculation. And I know that since the city of Blue Springs committed to providing that service, you know, I think we're on the hook for it.
Forever?
Sure, I mean, if that's, if, if that's the vote of the people, if that's the will of the people, I'm not saying.
I'm not willing to make that commitment.
I'm not saying it's not legal to transfer the service, but my, my ethical concern is, is that you do go ahead and reduce the taxes for that, for that significant of a service that you're taking away.
Your honor, members of the council, there's been a lot of comments made about the budget process, so maybe it'd be an appropriate time for me to just kind of remind you about some things that are ahead of you and things that, that are yet to come, that your staff is, is aware of. We're finalizing the budget proposal to give to you on August the 1st, which is a charter requirement. And then you will have a scheduled work session on August the 22nd, probably in this room, somewhere format here in which I will go through and I'll outline some of the major changes or fluctuations. And, and then I believe in early September, Christine, council will have the opportunity to set the property tax levy. You know, actually pass an ordinance every year to do that. And I think we're working around the MML conference, and there may be a conflict with the schedule on one of the council meetings, but then you'll, you'll read the budget ordinance and we'll hopefully adopt and pass a budget. The proposal that we're putting together at this point in time is consistent with the resolution and contract that the council approved in October. So what you'll be getting lines up with the agreement that was implemented and approved last fall. Obviously, Councilman Cole Pepper, there was different councilmen at that point in time, Councilman Darmann, who was working through that process. But the level of change between what we're subsidizing CJC now, or the EMS program, and what we will go to in the proposed budget, there will be a $225,000 swing if that in fact occurs. I can tell you right now that we talk about that being unallocated money. Anybody who does a budget in here knows that there are two ways we can lower costs. We either reduce a service, we do, we eliminate some of our contractual services, we might tweak salary adjustments, we might tweak benefits, we try to trim costs, or we try to increase revenue. And we've, and you've established policies about the use of user fees, we try to maximize that. And, and all that works, it is all very fluid and it all ebbs and flows. In our next year's budget proposal, we're going to have a $300,000 swing just in our employee benefits and work comp insurance. The point I'm trying to make is that very quickly, money that you believe is available to be allocated, or it's a windfall, or it's, whoa, look at what we got here, can be sucked up very, very quickly through just standard operating costs. It's our job to manage those, and it's our job, if you make a policy direction that says, Mr. Johnson, you got to manage that over here, and if we're going to use general revenue that's freed up through this program and we want to direct it into infrastructure and to other priorities, we will, your staff will do that. You establish the priorities. Also, you know, every single year, we, our budgets fluctuate, our sales tax fluctuates. Our interest income over the last five years has gone from $400,000 five years ago to $80,000 today. Where did that money go? Well, you didn't tell me to cut services. You, you told me to find a way to make it work. And, and so when you began having conversations about rolling back or cutting a tax that supports our current budget, your staff gets really nervous about, well, how are we going to make that work? You're, you're limiting our tools and opportunities that we have to meet your goals and your priorities and to address those things that are well documented in our citizen surveys. So we're prepared to do and go wherever you want to go, but I'd like to at least be able to give you the full budget. And as our good city administrator Fred Sims used to say, it's my budget right now, but as soon as I give it to you on August the 1st, it's yours, and whatever you guys decide to do with it, you do with it and we'll implement it.
I assume the August 1st budget is based on the assumption that the tax will pass?
It's, no, it's, it's, we've taken a conservative approach here. So, yeah, so we, and the good thing is, is the work session will come after the vote, so you'll know what you really have.
Right. Anybody else?
Your honor, I guess I'd like to know if there, where people are at, if we can try and quantify a number, or, you know, if we're not going to try and quantify a number, then you know, we can talk about where it may go.
I would agree mostly with what Chris said, and I want to look at real numbers in the budget. And if the cost of doing government is here and our projected revenue is here, I'm not going to rule out rolling back to get from here to here. Does that make sense? I'm not going to rule it out, but I want to see real numbers, I'm not going to commit to it tonight.
Do you have any comments?
I'd just say ditto to that.
Susan?
I have to see numbers, I, I can't. I can't, yeah, I'm sorry, I cannot make a commitment to something when I don't have the facts to back it up. And, and I'm not opposed to a rollback. If we have all this money, I don't see how it's going to happen, but until I see those numbers in that budget, I am not going to make a commitment.
I'm all for 10% off coupon anytime, but.
Did you use one for those shoes?
You know, look at it, I'm sorry, I make a lot of it, Ron, I'll need to, but, but, but yeah, I, I would look at a rollback, I would look at, at what the budget that, that you're bringing forward with. The one thing that we're talking about is by what we commit to, if we commit to a rollback, we're committing not only now, but we're committing a rollback for 10 years. Unless you go back and ask for, go back to the public and say, hey, we really need that money and we need to come back. And, and I guess a sign of what we're doing is, we're asking them in November that we need money to be able to do something. So, so we've already preloaded this thing up to say that we need that, and the only place we can get it is come back to you guys as residents and say, hey, we can use that. So, but I definitely, I mean, you guys did real good, and my compliments to staff, Todd, your staff. I mean, you guys did great for providing everything that we asked for, I mean, tons of information and stuff. So my compliments to you, but I think we ought to deal with this under the budget side.
Well, Chris, like you said it first, so I think everybody's pretty much in agreement with you.
I think we all just.
Take a look at the budget, keep all options open, we'll look at them, and again, when I'm looking at $146.5 million in unfinited capital improvement projects, I don't really see that happening.
Your honor, I think we have a responsibility to the residents of Blue Springs to look at numbers first and not take a swag and then have to do a dance around it.
Yeah, this is a number. $146.5 million is a number. A huge number. And again, it depends on what kind of quality of life, am I going to take, how many dollars a year?
13 something.
13.
13 dollars?
Hang on, I left it up.
Yeah.
No, I didn't, I raised.
13.46, that's what it was.
Yeah, 13.21 was the number.
The value of me keeping us a top-notch city is more valuable than me getting $13.
Well, you know, Chris mentioned fiduciary responsibility, which we do have, it is our primary role here, I think, as a city council. And we've seen bad fiduciary responsibility in Detroit. That's what happens when you have bad management of a budget, you file bankruptcy. And this city is nowhere near that and will never be near that, because we won't let it happen.
Ron, did you get your question answered?
Well, yeah, it doesn't sound like there's going to be any, any proposed tax levy reduction at this time.
They, they will take it through the process when they have real numbers.
Right.
It's not saying yay or nay, it's saying we have to see the, the hard facts first. And I think we, we have to do that, we have to be responsible.
And if anybody gets the impression that this council, or at least I speak for myself, but I think I speak for everybody, that, that we're in favor of CJC and their proposal, we don't want poor service for our residents. There's no way. I mean, you've got the number one ambulance service in the state, what, number five, probably top five in the nation, and if you're going to have a heart attack, if you said, this is where you want to come to have a heart attack, now I don't know why you want to use that as a tourist thing. You're going to have a heart attack, come to Blue Springs and do it, you're going to, you're going to live longer, I mean, hands down.
There, I mean, there are ambulance companies who will come in here and do this without any subsidy, and I wouldn't call them for my dog.
But, but I think it's clear, as I always say, that we are, just what you said, that we are supportive of CJC's developed proposal.
Absolutely.
Am I misstating that?
Nope.
Well, your honor, I, as a, as a citizen, I can't, I, I think CJC has done an outstanding service as a councilman. I appreciate everything they've done, I've been very proud and to know that since 1992, you know, putting them in, in the job, taking Blue Springs out of it and, and putting them in charge of it, lives have been saved. At the same time, I'm not going to vote to duplicate my taxes. So that's the way I see it.
But the rest of you are, so they're supportive?
Yes.
Does staff have enough to go off of? Does staff have, do you have a feeling, a comfortable feeling of where you want to go with this? Harry, do you see this look like, nope?
Well, I've, I've laid it out, we're, I'm preparing a budget that I'm going to give to you on August the 1st. And you will have a budget work session, you'll have an opportunity to consider a proposed property tax levy. You can, as a council, introduce as many amendments to change that levy. As you indicated, when, once you roll back, it, that, as Councilman Fowler pointed out, you got to take it out. The Hancock Amendment does require you, that if you're going to increase taxes, the voters have to approve that. It's always easier to go backwards than it is to increase, and you know.
Well, I will, I will end this session by saying, we are a city on the move. Ron Paul?
Can I ask one question, Mayor? There's also public hearings as part of the budget process, what's the date for the public hearing? Where the public can come and, and give us their thoughts on this?
The first meeting in September.
It's on a Wednesday, I think it's September 4th.
September 4th. And the, the work session is open to the public, although, your honor, you can take comments on that, but that work session is open to the public.
Certainly, anybody can submit written comments if they want to. But, but the budget session is pretty much sitting around like we are right now, table, around the table, and, and just hashing it out and discussing. Okay, nothing else?
Yes. I appreciate all my colleagues' patience with me during all this and staff, they really put up a lot of hours into this. So I know there's been a few ruffled feathers, but that's, we all have different opinions and directions, and anyway, appreciate everybody's support.
I appreciate you saying.
You had a week to see on vacation.
Yeah, you did. Get a week to get out.
I'm surprised you came back.
Okay, that's it, you're done.